I'd like to call this me, uh, this meeting of the Saldovia Planning Commission to Order. It is six oh nine, is it six oh nine P M? Six oh five P M, uh, August sixth, twenty twenty five? And if the clerk would do the roll call?
Commissioner Kroll? Turn it back. Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Commissioner Forsberg?
Here.
And Commissioner Sweet?
Here.
We have four members present, Madam Chair.
So we're all in attendance and we have a quorum. Um, I'd like to get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
And could I have a second?
I can second that.
And if the clerk could do the roll call?
Commissioner Kroll?
Here.
The, uh, yes vote to approve the agenda or no vote?
To approve the agenda.
Yeah.
Yes. Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsberg?
Yes.
And Commissioner Sweet?
Yes. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes and if I could get a, a motion to do that?
And just to note, those minutes are in the lay down.
Okay, so it's in the separate. Thank you, Commissioner, and if I could get a second?
I will second that.
And if the clerk could take the roll?
Commissioner Kroll?
Present.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsberg?
Yes.
And Commissioner Sweet?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kroll, was that a yes vote from you as well?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsberg?
Yes.
And Commissioner Sweet?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kroll, was that a yes vote from you as well?
Yes.
Okay, so we have four yes votes.
Thank you, and the, um, minutes have been approved, and then item E, public comments regarding items not on the agenda. Are there any public comments?
I'm not seeing any, Madam Chair.
And the next item is G, consideration of site plans. Um, S P C Resolution twenty-six dash oh one, recommending approval of preliminary plat Fleming Giles Estate, uh, Luno, twenty twenty-five replat of lot twenty, lot seven, et cetera, on page five. And, um, is, and is the staff, um, going to make a presentation on that?
Yeah, I can run that really quick. I'm gonna share the screen here. So this was a preliminary plat that was brought by, on behalf of Peter Lenoff, who owns two properties that are up at the end of Vista Street. And they're requesting to combine those properties by vacating the lot line in middle. So let me just scroll to my report here. So I did this a different way following the city of Kenai. I created a resolution that would recommend that preliminary plat with, um, certain findings. So on behalf of the commission, if there's any other thing on there that you'd like to address or change in the findings, um, you can amend that resolution. So the staffer's part, report starts on page five. I'm gonna take my mask off for a moment. So the staff recommend, recommendation would be to recommend approval of the preliminary plat. So on page five, you'll see the applicant is Seabright Survey on behalf of Peter and Svele No. And the legal descriptions are lot seven from Fleming Giles Estate and lot eight A Fleming Giles Estate number two. Those are the two lots that they're seeking to combine. There is a larger, next to where, um, Harmony is sitting, a larger view of that plat that we'll go to in a moment. And the K P B parcel numbers, these are in the residential district, so they're both currently in that residential district. So according to Saldovia Municipal Code and Plating, it states that all plans replats and plats have to come before the committee. So if you'll look at the analysis, it just goes through the minimum lot size requirement, which is in this zoning district dependent on the structure built, but it has a minimum lot size and width is five thousand square feet. A structure containing one dwelling unit and twice, twenty-five hundred square feet per dwelling unit for structures containing two or more dwelling units. So for these properties, uh, the city manager giggle can correct me if I'm wrong, but city water and sewer are already existing on these properties. Well, and the dwelling units on the proposed lot will be required to establish a connection once built to those utility system. So below there, you'll find the requirements and findings that pursuant to S M C eighteen thirty-two oh four oh, compliance with the minimum lot size and with requirements of the residential general zoning district will be reviewed during the building permit review. And the minimum lot size and width for district is spelled out there. Then pursuant to S M C thirteen oh four and thirteen oh six, the water wastewater connections are subject to the regulatory requirements of the city of Saldovia. And number three is pursuant to S M C eighteen thirty-two oh five oh to oh eight oh. The compliance with, um, our zoning requirements like parking spaces, lot coverage, building setbacks, and maximum building height will be reviewed during that building permit review process as well. So the intent of these individuals, I understand, is to build their house right kind of on that lot line, and that's why they're uh, they're to combine their house. They have submitted some building permits for the outside buildings, outer buildings that they have, but they've yet to do the building permit for their main house, and they were directed to combine those lots if they wanted to pursue putting the house where they wanted. So that's what they're doing. And you scroll down, this will give you a little bit of a view of where that, those lots are on the screen there. And so that's inside beach, just.
That'd be right there, since it's in the road, inside beach. So these are the two lots, but they're at the front just to have them here.
And then on the next page is the preliminary plat, the middle form. Um, but they have to enter the Kenai Minutes Libero, followed by their preliminary plat here, which there is a larger copy here if anybody wants to take and look at that in print. And then I added in just the, um, replats that are combining. So here it would be lot eight from Fleming Giles Estate. And then lot eight A, or I'm sorry, lot seven. That basically does conclude the staff report. How do you feel there's things to ask?
I have a question. Um, this last map, I don't, I can't, this one, I just don't understand where it is. It's got lot A, three B, or tract three B, lot eight A. The lot eight A is the bottom lot of, so that's the current plat for that lot, and so lot eight A is going to be combined with lot seven here. So if you go back to this map, this lot eight A right here on the screen.
It's the.
Well, they're in two separate subdivisions, those two lots that they're being combined.
They're called lot seven, lot seven A. Not eight, I mean.
I am page eleven.
What page am I on? Well, I'm just, I don't under, I couldn't figure out where this was, this, this lot with lot tract three B and lot eight A. It didn't make any sense to me, like, where is that located?
It's a little bit later.
So this one, oh, that's eight A. Yes.
That little finger, is that, is that, uh, a road?
That's just to have.
It's a road, then, huh?
Yeah, that's the access off of Vista Avenue.
Is it already in?
That would make sense, okay. It's already in, yeah. Yeah, it's already in.
But the catheter thing, it's like across the street from, from the old place, but.
Right next to Mons.
Oh, it's up there by. Oh, because that big lot that Jenny sold to a few times. It's okay, this place worked out.
Okay. Try to make it bigger here. Yeah.
It's like five acres also, isn't it?
Yeah, five point oh one acres is what the replat up to.
And that's in the city limits?
Yes, it's the very edge of the city limits up there.
And the only other thing I saw, looking through this, was on page eight, the second sentence in analysis just seems like you need a word four in there. Um, it says, the minimum lot size requirement is dependent on structures built. Minimum lot size and width for residential is five thousand square feet. A structure, like, right there, for a structure containing one dwelling unit. It just seems like it needs that word added. Or per, yeah, just that I missed the word.
Per feet, and then a structure.
And just a period after beach. Big lot.
Yeah. Nice lot. And I guess it just means that if they sell it, they'll have to sell it as one lot, not, they can never now sell it as two separate lots, because it's combined.
And house considered.
Yeah.
Yeah, the house that they want to build is kind of right on that line.
Yeah.
And so they were wanting to do that, and they're informed that they had to actually combine those lots to do what they wanted, so they have started that process.
So no easements.
So, um, this is Randy. I just, um, had a question, so um, it's clear why they want to combine two lots. Um, is there any, um, is there anything in our, our code that would preclude creating such a large lot in the city?
No, there is no maximum size lot.
Okay. So, so basically, they're combining the lot to be able to build their, to site their house in a place that they want to put. So, and in order to, in order to do that, they have to combine the two lots.
Yeah, in order not to have to move the location of where they want to build.
Right, right, but it's, so they've picked an optimum place for where they want to build from their own perspective, and in order to do that, they have to combine the two lots to meet other requirements. So that's, that's why they're doing it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Clerk Diamond?
Um, nope, I don't have anything else. I would ask for the commission's consideration on the resolution recommending the preliminary plat.
Do the commissioners have any further input? Excuse me? Um, are, is there anyone, um, from the public who would like to make a comment?
No.
So not seeing any, Madam Chair.
Okay, so then, um, do we need a motion to approve the, uh, resolution S P C twenty-six dash oh one?
Yes.
And if, uh, somebody could, uh, make the motion?
Who make a motion that the planning commission approve? S P C twenty-five oh one, I guess, was it?
So to approve this motion, uh, this.
And if, and if I could get a second, um, on the resolution, um, S P C twenty-six oh one?
Yeah, what she said.
Okay, so, um, for the record, Commissioner Ryan made, uh, the motion, and Commissioner Forsberg made a second. And if the clerk could take the roll call?
Commissioner Kroll?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsberg?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Sweet?
Yes.
That's four yays.
Okay, so, um, the next item is, uh, H, Commission Business, uh, Building. Item number one, Building and Site Development Permit, Topographical Impact, Excavation, Fill, and Project List. And, uh, we have a presentation by the city manager?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. This starts on page fourteen of your packet. Uh, there is a memo. This document has gone through a few reiterations and in speaking with Clerk Diamond, um, and with, uh, how we routinely, routinely see other, um, communities deal with, uh, excavation, fill, grading, things happening on a site. And actually, this came about because we have it in our, um, Uniform Minor Offense Table, uh, a, a fine for not having a building or site development plan and, um, realizing, or Building and Site Development Permit, I should say, and realizing that, um, we already had, uh, a start of what it is that the commission has been talking about, and that's an expansion of that site development plan. I did quite a bit of research, and I couldn't find any other areas that combined both of those. A lot of them, uh, communities either just have a site development plan or just have a building permit or have both. Um, but they're separate. Uh, but previous discussion, we've discussed that it, there could be some confusion if we try to move from a building permit process to a zoning permit process or a site development plan process, which is really what we're talking about. Uh, not as much of what a building structure is. Um, because that is, uh, the onus is on the, the builder to follow those codes that are referenced and adopted, um, by the Saldovia City Council in Title seventeen. Um, however, uh, we're talking about expanding those, um, expanding the permitting for activities outside of just building a structure. Um, a, as I mentioned, that grading, excavation, fill, and such. Uh, this did go to council once, uh, with a simplified definition of topographical impacts. Um, and council feedback was that they needed, uh, clear definitions for adverse topographical impacts and better code enforcement language. Uh, so, and then reviewing, um, some other options on how to, um, clearly implement language and a process for navigating, um, permitting, applying for and permitting site development, expanded site development. Um, this is the newest reiteration. It, uh, starts, the draft ordinance itself starts on page sixteen. Um, and this is actually version two of this draft ordinance, and it does, we, we did have a version before that had, um, instead of building permit, uh, or a discussion at least, to have it be a zoning permit, but instead it combines the topics, so you'll see in here, um, and areas in bold and underlined, like on page seventeen, building permit required, except as provided in subsection of this section, a building a site development permit shall be obtained from the city for the following. So as not to confuse people who are familiar with the process that when you're building, you need a building permit, but again, expanding, you need a building permit or for site development, you need a site development permit um, as one. And if it's too cumbersome, um, we can split that into two. Uh, but it seemed like that was kind of the consensus, is to have this as one application as we move forward. And I do not have an example of the application at this time. Um, hoping to have that conversation on the ordinance first and then move forward. So if we go through these changes, um, if you look at page eighteen, and the changes are in bold and underlined. So, uh, and I may have jumped a little bit fast. You'll see that the building permit and site development, uh, the building and site development permit are required for the erection, construction, or moving of any building or structure. That's already in code. An increase in the height or an exterior dimension of any floor of an existing building, or an increase in the height or the footprint of an existing structure, again, already in code. Uh, uh, the demolish, uh, the, um, or removal of any building or structure. And I apologize, that one should have been bold or underlined, because that was not in code. And then decks and docks to be constructed into a body of water enter title zone, that one is in code. Uh, number six, site development activities that include land disturbance through grading, excavation, or paving on lands of slopes in excess of ten percent. Uh, number two, a land disturbance through grading, excavation, or paving of an area that might reasonably be expected to impact drainages, significant wetlands or non-significant wetlands. And number, uh, three, a proposal that would create impervious surfaces of such extent that might reasonably be expected to impact drainages, significant wetlands, or non-significant wetlands. So parking lots, um, you know, cement pads, different structures that are, um, are gonna potentially, uh, impact drainage. The building and site development plan you'll see underlying throughout the code, uh, follows that, uh, again, that expanded definition as just provided. I did leave in the communication tower piece, because I know that's a separate conversation you guys want to have, but just left it in yellow and, um, crossed out. And then here you'll see, so application, um, I would, I'd like to point out that our previous building permit code, um, that we would, through this ordinance, be repealing and then enacting the new code, um, is four paragraphs long. It's seventeen zero four zero two zero. You'll see it starting on page sixteen. And it, um, is a very simplified version of what a building permit is. This code does expand it, and it includes, um, language and provisions. Uh, so that hopefully it is clear to the public of what is required. Um, for instance, you know, the application, um, for the application process, that only the owner or leasing the lot or a person authorized in writing by the owner or leasing may apply for a building. And we already require that, but making sure that we put that in writing. Um, the city manager or the designated may require the applicant to submit, submit proof of authority to apply for a building and site development permit. We don't require that. That might be, you know, more than we need to require, so that's definitely a question there. Uh, and again, this comes from Homer. Homer City Code, um, in large, uh, so, uh, this is, this is not ours, but I did follow through and made sure that the stuff that is in ours is transferred into this. So under B, uh, that the, what is required on the application, um, which I, I think is a very fair thing to include in code, that this is what is required to be on the application. We didn't have it before, but we do require it, because it's on the application, right? You need name, residence, address, mailing address, legal description, narrative description of the intended use, zoning code, use classification, um, a survey plat or plan drawn to scale for new buildings or structures. Um, the survey plat or plan required by subsection five, this section shall also include elevation. That's not something that we currently include. However, I have noticed that recent drawings coming in, there have been quite a few that have included elevation, and it makes it a lot easier to make a determination on building permit if it's there. Uh, so that seems like, uh, that that would be very applicable to include. Uh, copies of any building permits or other permits required by applicable federal, state, or local laws. We have that right on our building permit application that we require that. So if you need a tidings permit or Kenai River Center permit or other permits, that you should be including those things. Uh, copies of approved plans or other submitting that may be required by his code, such as, but not limited to driveway permit, water and sewer utility connection permit. And then I crossed out, there were some other examples from Homer of different things that could be included that, um, currently that is not existing for us in any form. Uh, such additional information as the city manager or the designated shall require to enable the city to determine whether the application satisfies the requirements for the issuance of a permit. The applicant's signed certification that all information contained in the application is true and correct, which we already have. Um, that's, we're operating it, so now, uh, under those standards, and so just making sure that those standards are explicitly spelled out in our code. Um, and then under seventeen zero four zero, zero four zero, zero four, zero four zero, permit issuance and denial. Again, uh, expanding that language that the city, um, will deny a building and site permit if the application is incomplete or is determined that it doesn't need all the requirements, uh, something that we already do. I did highlight in yellow because, uh, in our, this was from Homer. Again, in our code, um, and this is something I wanted to ask the commission for consideration. Our code does not, um, our code requires that anytime somebody res submits an application, if it's denied, that it's a, a new fee. And currently, our fee, for instance, for a new residence or commercial building is five hundred dollars, application fee. So something to consider there is whether that's applicable, if we, and if, and a, and a denial, I think, is, is gonna probably be pretty significant if you're getting your application denied, um, because we work with our applicants hand in hand on answering questions and making things that go through, um, that they're able to go through and, and, um, and fill those requirements. But, you know, we have had it happen before. We did have somebody uh, on the north end of town who wanted to build a little house on a little lot. And they, you know, the, the, the extra permits needed were in excess so much for conditional use and variance and such, that that wasn't able to be followed through. So, you know, that, that building permit was denied. So I guess if they submitted again, they would pay again, but there's also been a, a timeline there that that makes sense. So just something to consider. I, I don't have the, uh, complete answer at this time, and maybe there's a time period that's added to this if it's not resubmitted within, you know, a certain time period of time, then they have to, to pay again. Um, or maybe everybody's comfortable that, yeah, every time you submit, you pay that fee. Uh, would love to hear your guys' feedback on that. But I'll.
Right now?
No, I can continue on unless you have feedback right now.
Well, um, I think it is, it's just for somebody to do it right.
Mm-hmm.
You know, with having that language in there, and like you say, you work with them really closely, so I guess I'd keep it.
Keep it that way?
Okay. Does it cost you guys?
It does. To submit it. Which is part of why those fees have gone up so much. Um, that was one of a council member, a former council member Kennedy's, uh, initiatives, but, um, which, you know, made sense, because it does, it takes quite a bit of time. Uh, again, and granting a building and site development permit, no city. Uh, again, and granting a building and site development permit, no city official or employee has the authority to grant a waiver, variance or deviation from the requirements of the zoning code and other applicable laws and regulations unless such authority is expressly contained therein. Uh, so just a little protection there that, um, you can't just have the authority to, um, waive other requirements of the, that somebody might need by having this building permit. Uh, if the city grants a building and site development permit when applicant has not obtained all necessary permits or approvals, uh, that that's not a, uh, a permission that those, all those requirements have been satisfied. So that's up to the, the, um, applicant to make sure that they are receiving all of their other necessary permits and approvals. Um, as well as the city does not excuse, well, like I said, that, uh, does not excuse such a requirement, nor does it constitute a warranty or representation that all required permits and approvals have been obtained. So. Uh, next question on here, you'll see the two yellow and we just, we kind of talked about this last time about requiring an asphalt. And then I saw this lovely language, um, from, must've been Cordova. Uh, so I left it with Cordova's language and that's why it's COC. Cause I felt like this might have been more applicable to what the commission was looking for. Um, before, you know, we talked about requiring an asphalt, uh, survey for a new residential or commercial structure. Um, and I know that that may, could constitute an issue. So then we also talked about having a checklist or having a, um, site inspection by staff. Uh, so here we have language, site inspection and final completion. And we could add in that midway point here that you guys discussed last time as well, uh, that prior to the city's issuance of a certificate of a, oh no, COC is not Cordova's certificate of completion. Sorry, I'm tired. Um, but I do think it did come from Cordova. Prior to the city's issuance of certificate of completion for a project or development falling under the purview of this section, the owner or developer or agent shall notify the city of the project's completion and city staff shall visit the site and inspect the work performed. If the work is found to have been completed and compliance with the plans and documents, all other city requirements have been met, the city will issue a certificate of completion and provide it to the owner or developer agent. Um, we have had developers, larger developers ask for this. Do you guys do a certificate of completion? No, we don't. Uh, so I don't think it's out of the realm of moving forward and that's that step instead of requiring an asphalt. I don't know if you guys have thoughts on that. Uh, but we've talked about, you know, enforcement and closeout and, and assurance that, you know, what is it that we are doing to ensure that people are following through with the requirements of, um, the zoning when they build a structure. So looking at that piece.
So, um, this is, this is Randy, um, have a question. Um, when, um, certificates of completion are done, are the neighbors notified so that they know that the project is completed?
I mean, we could implement that if we wanted to.
And I
That's what you guys wanted to do.
I don't, I don't know if it would be helpful or not. I mean, if you're a neighbor and if somebody's doing a project, if it's, is it, would it be helpful to be notified? Or is it just whatever anybody else is doing is whatever they're doing and you don't need to notify people?
It could be something that is implemented on the new planning webpages. That certificates of completions are there available for people to view.
Yeah, and
As a thought.
Yeah. So just, just, yeah, I, I guess we're, we're working our way through this and we're going to be revisiting this again. Is that correct?
Uh, as many times as we need to.
I, I, I didn't think we were going to be completely done this time. Is that, or am I mistaken?
No, it's, it's completely up to you guys.
Okay.
Um, so, yes.
Something like that. If the job's done, that's a pretty good outline of this. When, uh, when the trucks leave or whatever. You know, I mean, other than if they quit or something, I guess. And the buildings still have, you know, have built. But it should be, you know, pretty well
Obvious.
Maybe visit as far as sometimes they'll work till eight, nine, none. You know, I don't know if there's any
I think it's ten P M. I'd have to double check on that.
Yeah.
But
I mean, that's, that might be something to think about or, or starting in the morning, you know?
When we, this is Allison. I have another concern. Uh, we had talked, you mentioned earlier, we had the midpoint inspection or site visit. It seems like when they're digging the hole for the foundation, that's the time to make sure you're not too close to the property line. So, because once that's in, it's, what are you going to do? Change it?
Yeah.
It's okay.
So, uh, this is member of the public, Carney Peyton, and I was on council when part of this came. And I was one of the ones that was like, oh, this is kind of, this is kind of crazy that we don't have a lot of language. But I did have a follow-up question that goes along with this and I apologize, I did not get to finish just reading your packet before I came to your meeting today. I am curious about your building permit process for larger structures that might butt up against like right up on that line, you know, either one or more of those lines. And, um, if there's some, okay, let's see. Um, if you have like a process of going out and checking the site at that time when they have it like, uh, you know, lined out, like gritted out or just to make sure that they are meeting those, uh, requirements and those being held accountable to their setbacks. Um, it seems like we have some pretty large structures that have been built within city limits in the last, let's say decade, that seem, they seem pretty close. And once you get a structure put together, like are, is the city going to take on the financial burden of taking those landowners to task? No. Who has the, who has the palate for that? But do you, and it's probably in here because this looks pretty thorough, but I, I am just wondering if you guys already have a process for that? Where you're bringing in a professional, uh, somebody to help. So it's not just neighbors reporting on neighbors. It's somebody that's like, somebody that's a public.
Um, and I defer to the city manager.
So thank you for that question. No, we don't. And so that's part of this discussion. And that's what came up last time is having that midway check. So I, I'm, um, wondering if this is the process we want to go through the certificate, certi- uh, complete certificate of completion, I then building in those steps in the code that, yeah, one bef- one before groundwork is going to take place or, um, you know, I think there's language that we can do there, um, that we are ensuring that we are checking. And then if it's, we've talked about in the past, um, as you guys remember that should it be too close to call, then we do require a setback check, which would be a little bit of a financial burden, additional financial burden on, um, that individual. But if they're within five foot of their setback and we don't have a current survey and we can't tell, then it's that, it goes to that further burden for them to prove that they are five feet from that property line right away, whatever it is. Um, so they're not within that setback. So, uh, that would be the next step to this search of a bit of completion. Actually, it would be the, the previous step if that's something that the commission wants to consider.
Yeah, I would, I, I would think so. But yeah, let's hear what the public has to say.
I like that. It's a hundred percent where my mind was going, you know, it shouldn't be incumbent upon the taxpayers, uh, to pay for those types of things when a permit is not being met or when a building is not being, um, yes, thank you for putting it that way. I like that. I'm also wondering about, I've been trying to figure out the rubric for when you have a structure that, I can't remember our height permit, but is it like thirty eight feet? It's like thirty.
It depends on the district. Sometimes it's twenty eight, sometimes it's thirty two.
Okay, twenty eight, thirty two. Thank you. Yeah. Uh, new thirty, that's too high. Um, but you know, once a building gets so tall and a roof, like you can only pitch a roof so steeply before you like, before you have splash off. And in some cases like that five feet, like I have a house in my, uh, community, uh, neighborhood that has a really hot, high, large roof. And it just so happens that their property slopes just right at it, you know, like, that's just the geography that we live with. It's a beautiful place. Is there a rubric in place that's easy for the planning commission or people permitting? Um, to be able to determine if the building that they're proposing, if at a certain scale is too close to that, is five feet a, like a reasonable setback once you get so much, right? Because once it gets so high, so vertical, yeah. Do you know the words I'm looking for here?
Well, isn't the setback from the drip line?
Well, the, so a five foot, a five feet setback is adequate for a standard one story building. But once you go up a, a second story, you know, like, and the consideration changes depending on the professional opinion and mine is not a professional opinion. It's just what I'm able to glean in my own research for my own structure in consideration. I'm just wondering for the sake of your time and the city's staff time, is there a professional reference that you could have in place for when someone comes to you and says, I want to build a five thousand square foot home, you know, whatever that hits the highest point I can build it to. And you're saying, okay, love it. Gorgeous. Raise that tax base. But also five feet is not a far enough setback for that structure.
So, um, just, just to, um, add to the conversation, it looks like what you're talking about is the roof pitch. And, and so there are different, different, um, ratios of roof pitch. So it sounds like we just need to do a little bit of checking to see if there's some relationship between the roof pitch and runoff and setback. And if there's something that needs to be added, if it's, you know, if it's, if it's a specific type of roof pitch, it may have more of an impact than not. And so that may need to be included in the conversation.
Is it, if I say one more thing as a public member, sorry, not to be like chewing on this so much. I just, I bring this to you guys because you're in this conversation and I've only been on council for a couple of years, but we've had to have this conversation with property owners a couple of times. Because we do have, you know, different properties in the community that are funny shaped. And I think everybody should be allowed to build on their property. And, um, if there's a simple process for the people who have to help make those decisions to help direct, you know, because some, there's like pie shapes and you know, but we have weird shapes around here. If there's an easy, if there's a, like, if there's an easy rubric in place for those questions, it might streamline your process going forward. Um, it's like, we don't have a lot of things to consider. We don't have a lot of like big question, but we do have weird weather. And sometimes we get tons of snow and our crew gets, you know, way late and you have five feet of snow in, on a hill, you know, like, that doesn't happen often, but when it does, it's impactful for the people who live in those areas. So that's why I'm bringing this question to you guys so that when you're building this really wonderful piece of code, something that isn't easier.
So, um, kind of listening to what you're saying, it seems like some of the things that could be, um, impacting other property owners would be it's the pitch. It could be water runoff and it could be snow load. So then the, then it seems like the next thing is what are the barriers or the, or the things that could help remedy that? So potentially if there's a specific type of pitch, then it might require, um, gutters or, or snow, uh, you know, the snow breaks or whatever. So I, I think it's really valuable in terms of the conversation to, to really stop and think about it because you know, you're building, you're building your dream home and then you're like, then there may be some things to think about. So it's just helping, uh, at this point, look at what are the things that could be done? Because if you can engineer out the problem and it's not, it, it's, it's probably fairly straightforward to do it as you're building your home. Then, you know, then you can prevent nuisances from happening and, and keep things safe. So I appreciate the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me participate.
Um, also, I, I just have a, um, a, a comment on line item, the line number ninety seven. Um, I think that demolish should be demolition.
Listen, I mean.
Um, and any further?
There's more.
More, okay, yeah, yeah. I just, yeah, just.
Um, yeah. So if I can just carry on, we're getting there. Uh, the next thing that is new for us, but it seems like, um, in the interest of the public, it would be beneficial is that having that permit public display um, requirement. I don't know how many times I have people ask me if people have a building permit, which I appreciate because sometimes they don't. Um, so then just making sure that people do display that and then people know whether somebody, uh, does or doesn't, uh, and that things are on the up and up. Um, permit free, we already have. And again, we're keeping in that piece of, uh, paying again. And then we also have in our current code, a fifty dollar late fee will be charged in addition to the regular building permit application fee. Or a daily fee of ten dollars will be levied for each day that a building permit is not on file at the city office. Uh, we have had to use this before, not very often, but we, we have and just wanted to call that out in case there are other, um, differences that you guys would like to consider. Um, but, uh, you know, depending on the timeline, we can say, yeah, that's fifty dollars plus your building permit free or, you know, ten dollars a day plus your building permit fee. I think I've done it like twice. It's not been very often, but we have had to do it. Other permits under the zoning code, we talked about already. Um, and then, then, uh, there's a new piece in here about how we can revoke a permit, um, which also seems very applicable. Uh, again, if that's, um, any misrepre- an error, misrepresentation, misstatement of material fact, um, either with a, with or without intention, material change and the location size or shape. So that would go potentially with that midway check. You go out there like, whoa, this is not what you guys said it was. We're revoking this permit. Um, you need to redo another one. I would like to just put out a comment that no, we don't require people to move their buildings if they um, don't follow the code, but we do require them to apply for a variance, um, which, you know, I don't know. How effective that is. So having that midway point would, would be beneficial.
Yeah, but it, it would be better to have it like
Yeah.
Earlier
Yes.
Than midway, but I don't know.
Well, we can do like a foundation, yeah, before work.
Oh, like a foundation check.
Yeah.
And then kind of a check when it's dried in.
But yeah, yeah.
At least the foundation check. That's the big piece.
So the foundation could be pilings or it could be excavation or it could be a variety of things.
Mm-hmm. Uh, prior to the revoking of a permit, the city manager shall give the applicant, uh, notice of the grounds for the revoc- uh, revocation and a meaningful opportunity to be heard considering those grounds, which seems prudent. And then we get into site development standards, which I believe this is where, um, Ms. Peyton was going. And making sure that we have, um, have some of those clearly. And maybe not necessarily site development because it is building related, but, um, also in site development having, um, I'll have to look at that, where that would fall in snow shed. Um, but we can, we can make that work. Uh, so site development standards was larger and you could see in homers, they have chapters, chapters and chapters. Chapters, but they have, they have quite a bit, um, in here, which we were originally looking at. And I did simplify it back down because, so they have, we started with, uh, da, 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 da. I went too far. On page, you know, one, um, well, there's no page. On page, you know, one, um, well, there's no page numbers here. But if you go just a, a few pages further, you'll see chapter 2144, slopes and coastal development um, for Homer, which uh, has, you know, that natural drainage, uh, setbacks, erosion control. So here we're getting into more discussion regarding slopes. Um, which I believe Ms. Peyton was um, alluding to. And then what those site plan requirements were. And then if you look at chapter 2150, site development standards and miscellaneous regulations. Again, talking about slopes, drainage landscaping requirements, uh, stormwater. And then the site development plan, you know, they've got different standards by, for different, for different levels of development. So we were previously talking about in our plan having a section on stormwater, a section on landscaping um, and a section on slopes. And we can implement that back in and we could put in a section on snow if we wanted to, or I guess slopes that would, that would line up with it. Uh, but it did seem a little bit cumbersome. Um, and may, maybe it's, we need to look at having some outside help um, from a planner or an engineer to help with that language so that it's not, so that it is specific to Saldovia. Um, but so having a very simplified version of it right now, where we have site development standards general, all development and all zoning districts must comply with site development standards. And then um, the site development talks about that development should not adversely impact other properties by causing damaging alteration of surface water drainage, surface water, ponding, slope failure, erosion, siltation or root, root damage to neighboring trees or other adverse effects. Upon completion of earthwork, all exposed slopes and all cleared, filled and disturbed soil should be protected against subsequent erosion by methods such as, but not limited to landscaping, planting and maintenance of vegetative cover. They did have in here that all exposed, cleared, filled and disturbed soil shall be revegetated within nine months. I don't know if we need to be so um, defined on that. That's something to discuss. And then for site plan, just what that looks like. And this is a great one because you know, like we expanded the building permit application process, having that language in of what a site plan is, and that'll be, you know, the drawings that accompany the permit. So having that language again in here, and it's just uh, A through J, but talking about those exact things that we look for, which is the price, precise location of lot boundaries and all setbacks and easements. The location and dimensions of all existing and proposed structures. I mean, it's pretty much exactly what we have listed on our building permit. Elevation drawings and dimensions, that's new, um, but beneficial. Existing site features and conditions, this is also new, but if we're talking about site development applicable. So existing site features and conditions include topography, drainage streams, water bodies, wetlands, lines of mean high tide, storm berms, maybe that one's not as necessary. Areas prone to erosion and the general location of vegetation. And the precise location of all existing and proposed structures in relation to existing and proposed streets or other right of ways. Uh, access including proposed driveway and all parking areas. A grading and drainage plan indicating all cuts, fills and areas of disturbance as applicable. The plan shall display elevation changes to cut and fill. So that's uh, new, but talking about that site development again. And then the location of the site in relation to other existing uses on neighboring properties. So that gives a little bit of a overview for what um, what we're looking for when we look at a site plan before we approve a building permit and site development plan. And then I just wanted to provide a, a clean copy of our existing building permit code on page 25. Um, I did do an exercise where I crossed out everything that had been implemented into this code um, to make sure that everything was implemented and it was. And you have some background information from previous discussion that we had. And I just, we'll refer back to that memo real quick and see if we missed anything. Um, on page 14. So you'll see the summary of changes that I just went through. And then um, we have, I did have some questions about the fee resubmission, which was answered. Uh, yes, keep. And then the site development fee, should the fee schedule be amended to include standalone site development permits? So um, right now we have $500 for new residential or commercial structure, $200 for accessory structures, additions or remodels over 400 square feet, $100 for additions, remodels under 400 square feet and no permit required for projects under 100 square feet. But a verification form is required to confirm exemption. So this maybe doesn't need to be questioned right now, but if we are expanding the building permit into site development as well, that doesn't necessarily fall under new or accessory or additions. Um, so that would be something to think about is what kind of uh, fee, you know, so that would be, you know, if you say like $200 for site development fee or $100, I don't know what, what makes the most sense. But um, certainly something that should be addressed if we continue to move forward in this direction. And then we talked about the closeout requirements. Um, were you guys comfortable with moving to that sort of certificate of a completion and then making sure we have a foundation check at the, at the beginning?
I have a, a, just a quick check in on, so check, check the foundation. And then the midpoint check, that one was important because of elevation. Was that, was that the?
I think that was more because we were thinking about the foundation check. So we're moving it up, but we could do, I mean, it's up to you guys. Do we need a midpoint check to check height or?
If, I guess if, if I, I'm not sure what the answer is to that, but it's like, what are the, I guess, when we're looking at checking in, what are we trying to make sure is happening? And so it sounds like the foundation part was really important because that sets the stage for everything. Um, and then we've, then we've got, you know, we've talked a little bit about, you know, the roof pitch and so forth. And then there's, and then I know that uh, there have been cases where people have built over the elevation. I don't know that that's a huge problem, you know, sometimes mistakes are made, but if, if that's not a problem, it, you know, we don't need to necessarily have a checkpoint in that. But so my question would be, is there anything that would, it would be a good idea to have a midpoint check? Because you're trying to ensure that something specific is done or not done. If, if it, if that's not an issue and if you've, if they're supposed to build to their plan and they've identified what their elevation is, then, you know, it, it's more like, is it necessary? Yes or no? If it is, then it should have a check. If it's not, then it, then it shouldn't. But um, that would just be my question.
I think you answered your question, if I may, by saying height.
Yeah, so is it, I mean, if that is something that you want to be, you want assurance that it's actually correct, then yeah.
I think that's something the public would like. I have heard people from the public mention that, you know, well, is it really as high as they say it is? Because it seems higher.
Right. And is it measured from, like, if you have a sloping lot, is it
Yeah.
in the middle of the lot or the lowest point or the highest point? Where you start your measurement.
It's from the found, top of the foundation, I think is where it's measured from. Isn't it? Yeah. It's a jeopardy question for tonight.
I thought it was from the road.
It depends. I guess for the commercial business district, I think it's the midpoint of, it's the midpoint of the road of Main Street to the uh, to the top of the roof. But for other places, I think it's from the top of the foundation, but I, I, that's just wherever, whatever is in my brain coming out, it may not be correct.
The maximum, so for instance, under, what am I under? That's funny. Residential. Height, the maximum building height is 28 feet, measured from where the final grade meets the average of the two highest foundation corners. Below grade walls shall not exceed 10 feet and shall not cause the vertical height of the structure to exceed 28 feet from where the final grade meets the average of the two highest foundation corners and not to exceed an overall height of 38 feet.
It was 28 feet to begin with.
Yes. From the final grade. Not, not over 38 over total.
Any of 20 meter variance on it?
Hmm, so 28 feet from the foundation. The two highest points of the 28 and not to exceed over 38 overall. You could have 10 feet of foundation and 28 feet of building.
It's making it a lot taller. Uh, some are, are there any diagrams that instead of trying to figure out what this means in your head, when it is something that would be easier to see? If it was a, a little schematic? Have a little picture? I mean, it, to include, because also um, this, what we were just reviewing, the visibility at intersections, 18.66.090 on page 24. My comment on that was need a diagram.
Yeah.
Couldn't understand.
No, that's a great idea. And that one is in every single district. And so if that goes into under the building permit, that could go away. Under side development from every, that would just clean up the code a little bit because it would be in one place of standards instead of in every single district. Um, but a diagram is a great idea.
And, and there is uh, in the Homer code, there is an example, at least it's the start of, it's, it's got a uh, diagram. Uh, that, that maybe it's on, it's on page seven of seven of there at the city of homers. Uh, at any rate.
So next question, does vegetation require a timeline? And what is that timeline?
I think you took that nine months from Homer.
Mm-hmm.
I would say we're similar growing conditions as Homer. It's pretty important to get things revegetated before a big rainy season.
Yeah, that's, and that's a lot of the issue that we're trying to address and that we're starting to see in town is erosion from runoffs. I mean, we're a small space with a lot of development closed up, so, close up, so that, that makes sense.
So this is Randy, is there anything where we should have um, something that's to the effect of unless there are conditions that require revegetation sooner, so, because, because there may be circumstances that are um subject to erosion that, that could be serious that you would, might not want to wait to nine months. I mean, that may be fine for normal things, but if us, if there is, if there is a specific circumstance, um, like, I don't know, if you have a high pitched roof and it's running off or whatever, I, I don't know what, what it could, you know, it could be a variety of things, but it could be something where you're getting a, a volume of water coming through and then it could cut, it could cut into the soil and erode. So it would just be, it would just need to be a, a, a call. I mean, it's good for normal circumstances, but at least it gives you a leeway to address any specific issues that might be a hazard.
Sure. And then under site development standards, as I said, there was language that was more explicit towards wetlands, slopes, drainage and landscaping. Um, is that necessary or does the language um, that puts it back on the property owner, let me try to do it again. Uh, 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 uh. Uh, that they shall not adversely impact other properties by causing damaging alteration of surface water damage, surface water finding slope failure, erosion, siltation or root damage to neighboring trees or other adverse effects. Is that adequate? Is it adequate to say you can't do this, you need to refill if you are um, pulling out and putting new vegetation in? Or do we need to be more specific? Um, for instance, if you look at, let's see, as we were looking at those Homer codes, wetlands, and I asked this because I really didn't see this in a lot of other communities. Anchorage, of course, has pretty big uh, development standards, but they're more focused on buildings. Um, so Homer was unique in that and I can see why, because they are unique with all of their bluffs and erosion and the things that they have happening um, with landslides uh, and things in their community. Um, so uh, completely understand that and wondering, you know, the applicability for here. Uh, if that, if we need similar, and it sounds like at least for snow measures, we do. Um, but like if we look back at, I'm sorry, I don't have those page numbers, but just a little further back uh, under Homer's site development standards and miscellaneous, like I said, it's, you know, slopes. It does define that slopes, all development on site affected by a slope of 15% or more, bluff coastal edge of ravine as described shall be subject to the requirements, da, 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 drainage, all development activity on land shall conform to the following. Uh, that an engineered drainage system or a natural drainage needs to be included, included where open ditch construction is used to handle drainage within the development, a minimum of 15 feet shall be provided for many structures. I mean, this sounds like a lot that maybe we don't have the space or the necessary means for. Um, but maybe we need to do something on a smaller scale or maybe we try this and see if we are ensuring that the property owner is taking care of those needs. Um, maybe this is excessive. I'm not really sure. There's a whole section C on landscaping. Um, this seems like a little bit of a repeat. Um, it does expand on the revegetation though, within nine months following the initiation of earthwork or reseeded by the next August 31st. Um, which is interesting. Native revegetation is acceptable at the site naturally revegetates within that nine month period. If native revegetation is not successful within that nine month period, the property owner and developer shall revegetate by other means, no later than the end of that nine month period. Um, it also says landscaping, maintenance of native vegetative cover or plantings to minimize invasive species. Um, which might, you know, I don't know, like, how much oversight do we need? So uh, just something to consider and maybe you don't need to have that answer today, but really look at this page um, for chapter 2150 and let me know, let us know, you know, are there things that really should be included for drainage and landscaping and stormwater? Um, or is it okay if we um, put that onus back on the property owner and work with them through these plans? Um, while we move forward and then, and um, you know, see how that works.
This is, this is Randy. It, it seems like if, if we can provide the, the right size um, regulatory framework and then review the, the building codes and the site developments that have been done, let's say for a year's period and see how that worked and if there's any continuous improvement. And then that way it's maybe manageable and then the things that are um site specific to Saldovia that, that those may come up and, and then we could address those. That way it might, because we're, we're going from a fairly concise um, building permit to, and, and site development to something different. And so this gives everybody kind of a chance to experience it. And, and then it, um, as well as kind of reviewing what happened, also talking to the property owner, developers and getting their feedback on, you know, how did this work for you? Were, were there things that really don't apply or at any rate, just, just do that kind of good assessment so that then we could do a continuous improvement if needed. And, and then if, maybe if there are things that are too much, we can scale back on them or if there are things that need more substance, then we could, we could expand it.
Good. But um, throughout this whole discussion, I've been thinking of the property that's getting the lots combined. Because they spent, they did their site development already. I mean, they did a bunch of work out there. And they did it a couple of years ago and now they're getting to build. So if, if we're applying for one permit, it could it could be over a five-year period or something like because they did.
It would be a new permit at each project, just like they have had a new building permit for each building unless they're doing it as one.
Okay, so you could do a site development permit separate from a building.
Right, which is why we would include that fee in the fee schedule that that for just, you know, site development. Um. That's part of the discussion.
Up till now, it like it's okay to you have your site, cut down all the trees, do whatever you want because it's your land and.
Yeah, so we're.
Cut out slopes and do all sorts of stuff.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so that's what this is going to correct. But the timeframe that that could occur between when you do the site development versus when you build is could be, you would break it into two pieces.
Right, so it's one permit and it doesn't have to be. That was just something that was that came up in discussion and it could be too separate. Um. But it is one, but just like it's one building permit right now, but we do have people that apply for multiple building permits throughout the life of their property, um including the one for the that, I mean, they've already had two, so it's it is something that um.
They have those little buildings.
Yeah, that that does occur that people have have multiple permits throughout the life of their property.
A lot of people have just funds to develop.
Uh-huh.
And then wait a couple of years.
Yeah.
Bunch.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, making sense.
Sorry. And is good for tonight?
Is that good for you guys? It sounds like I have direction to come back. Um, and if you guys could do a little bit of homework and just read that wetland slopes, drainage, landscaping and see if there's anything that really does look prudent to include um beyond what's already in there, and I'll provide um the cleanup and bring that back at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. That's a lot of work. And it's, I mean, um, so the next item is the um.
Yeah.
Comprehensive plan update.
Mark it up.
Uh, yes, yay, comprehensive plan update. Um, so when I was wrong. Oh, there was another thing, but we'll do that at the next meeting. Um, part of that discussion. This should actually probably be a separate discussion, sorry, uh, distracted. Comprehensive plan update. So later on in your packet, uh, about midway. And there is a memorandum. And it follows the uh ordinance example from Bethel. So I don't know if you guys found it. It looks like Chair Sweet did. Hopefully, everybody else did. It has a nice, our nice logo on the top corner here.
Where?
Uh, it's about the comprehensive plan update. So just to let you guys know that on July ninth, two twenty twenty-five, a community event was hosted by Alaska Municipal League at the Seattle Community Center regarding the comprehensive plan update. Uh, it was an open format, which was kind of cool. People could come and go as they pleased. Uh, there's questions around the room regarding um the existing elements and then a potential new element on housing in the plan. Uh, we had about twenty-five members. The attendance sheet showed twenty-five, but I swear when I was in there at one time, I counted thirty-three. So I don't think that everybody signed in because it was pretty full. But the attendance sheet showed twenty-five members of the public, three from outside city limits, two are seasonal, and one was year round, twenty-two from inside city limits, seventeen year round and five seasonal. I don't know that that's pertinent, uh, but that was, uh, one of our council members asked for the statistic just to see who's coming out and making up um, uh, the the group of input that's that's been gathered. Of course, we've also had uh this survey comments, uh, which I think we had five. And then we've had some additional written comments that have been provided. As they're taking those comments and they are incorporating it into a draft comprehensive plan update uh that will hopefully be able to be presented at the September meeting. So they're trying to get that done here in August. Um, one piece that was kind of missing out of that was a little bit uh more direction on land use because there is, you know, we know that there's contention in the community on that. And so I don't know if the commission has appetite to have like a standalone work session just regarding land use and what the community wants moving forward. Um, but there's potential that that needs may need to occur. Uh, some of the, uh, there was a lot of really great conversation and I'd love to hear um your guys' input from those that attended. Uh, but some of the reoccurring themes for me really that I heard was road safety. Um, in particular pedestrian and bicycle safety, and then the importance of the pool. Those just seem to come up over and over again. And of course, I'm sure that's on our minds because we're in the middle of summer right now and we may not have a pool. Uh, looking at that timeline, you can see we did the survey, we had the community meeting, hoping to have that draft review in September. And September and October, uh, council review. And then November, a public comment period. Uh, I think we said there would be a thirty-day comment period. Um, hoping for again more at at any point during this having public comment um received is great. And then uh January twenty-sixth, the final draft for review by the planning commission, and then that should have said Saldovia City Council final draft review and adoption, January twenty-sixth. So sorry, I said the planning commission twice. Um, I would also say that those notes that were from the meeting were put on Facebook because we did have some people who weren't able to to attend that were interested in providing um feedback. So we did open that up and put that out there for the public. Um, we haven't received any, but it is an option if people want to provide that feedback um through that forum. But uh, like I said, have it at this time. You can see the input that was received on the following page. So the questions um are the headers at the top, uh, what has changed since two thousand fourteen. Uh, a lot of uh inputs there, COVID, ice cream shop. Um, AMHS ferry schedule. I'm thinking that's supposed to be gas, maybe that's supposed to be tax increase. Not sure on that one. They left it as written um on the board. Starlink, uh, aging population, so some good responses there. And then under community and human resources, those questions and the answers provided. Um, seems fairly consistent with um some of our existing plans. And I don't need to go through every single one unless you guys have specific questions, uh, but that was uh, pretty, pretty uh robust discussion with a lot of input. And then following that, there's a nice little table where they took the feedback and they are going to implement it into the current goals and this focus areas. Um, if they apply there, so uh they're have a twenty twenty-five input column uh following through and implementing that into the existing plan. And that's what I have on that.
How come some are yellow in the focus areas?
Uh, those are moved from the land use section of the two thousand fourteen plan to housing. At least this one is hmm under. I'm not sure. I'll have to ask why why they are. This was created by Alaska Municipal League. I will ask.
Oh. Moved from land use section.
And if um you have any public comment?
Yeah, I have a, I have one. It's just under. How do we improve or maintain Saldovia's air, water and water quality to protect resident health and environment? Which, you know, I think ties in great with your uh previous discussion about um replanting. Like, but I was just wondering here, and Seth has the find a grant to dredge the dam and fix our water sewer system possible or possibly a way to expand it so we can do more water catchment. Enforce what can be burned. What does that mean?
Oh.
Is that just a public comment piece there?
Yeah, these are public comments.
Oh, so like.
So anything that that has twenty twenty-five input is that's public comment?
That's the part that's being implemented. She's back on this meeting notes.
Okay.
And these are all public comments that are the all the bullet points.
I I was out of town. I didn't get, I didn't have the pleasure participating in the meeting and I was just kind of enjoying.
Yeah, so she didn't change any, like their word for word.
Verbatim.
Yep, right back onto. So these are the the public comments received.
So is it like burning permits? Is that what they maybe is like that how they were?
I'm sure what page you're on.
Oh, it's on page.
Well, they don't have pages, but it's what under which um.
Oh, yeah, it's under uh. Yeah. The bullet that's it, it's, oh, wait, no. Then it happening through and maintain Saldovia's here.
So it's under but environment?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, I kind of wondered about.
Enforce what can be burned? I don't know.
Don't like them burning tires?
I guess, maybe.
Oh, maybe, maybe it is a like a uh.
Like a burn barrel type or landfill. Does the landfill burn things other than paper?
Or wood stoves?
I don't know. Yeah, good question.
I know, it just seems like a really broad like. Sorry, give me.
Didn't say.
Sometimes they burn coal and.
Yeah.
People are sensitive to that, but.
That's true.
Don't use the carbon fire. Freshable materials.
That's true.
That boy scout juice.
You know, go inside to the stuff.
Any, any further comment? Then, any, any further um feedback to the commission from the city manager?
The fastest July.
Okay, moving right along. So um, we're we're working our way through the timeline and so in September we'll have at our September meeting, we'll have an opportunity to converse with the Alaska Municipal League folks.
That's the plan this time with the draft uh for review, an initial draft.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then the next one is the twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-one capital improvement plan project.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So there is another memo, just a few pages, if you know, it's after that table. Um, giving a summary that we update our capital improvement plan annually. Uh, this usually begins in August with a call out for projects to be included or prioritized in the plan. Uh, we also invite local organizations to suggest projects that they should be prioritized or to submit their own projects that they would like the city to support. Um, so that they can apply for grants and such and say, you know, that this is listed um in the city's capital improvement plan as a project that they support. Uh, eh, we do, I did includes close the well, and I guess it's, it was a separate attachment. I'm sorry, the the capital improvement plan itself. Um, but in reviewing that table of contents and future consideration pages, uh, wanting to know if there are additional projects that should be added, projects that should be removed, and projects that should be amended. And bringing this back to the commission because we talked to last year towards the end of this process and it was pointed out that you guys as the planning commission should be a part of the capital improvement plan. Um, and we did talk about last year how making sure that we are tying it back to the comprehensive plan. And so I did take an initial run at um tying those uh land use plan goals and focus areas, sorry, land use plan, sorry, capital improvement. Comprehensive plan. Focus areas and goals back to the capital improvement plan and that has started, but I think it needs a little bit better vetting and maybe not until the new comprehensive plan. Maybe we're putting the cart before the horse. Um, but I'm I'm wondering if that's a discussion that we can have in September and I guess we'll see how the capital improvement plan and the comprehensive plan themselves come together. Uh, but that might be something that comes forward. Um, at least you guys should look at what we have now. And make sure that those tie back and are applicable. Um, but also, like I said, looking at that table of contents and giving the feedback from the commission level of projects and priorities. Uh, and then wanted to let you guys know that there is an initial list of potential projects for inclusion or future consideration based on recent discussions, partnerships and needs determined by staff or requested by council and public. Uh, something that we've been uh working on. Um, uh, at the last municipal league level is a health impact assessment and a climate action and resilience plan. We are working with KB Neur on a hydrology and wetlands assessment grant uh or grant for that. Uh, we've discussed housing plan and that is something that was mentioned during the comprehensive plan. Uh, we discussed safe streets transportation plan. We were part of this uh safe streets for all uh uh plan that the Kenead Peninsula Borough completed, uh, but it was pretty broad and um not a lot of focus on actual Saldovia. So it sounds like that's something that we need to um bring down and make Saldovia size. We did uh put our name in with Alaska Municipal League with fifteen other communities uh for the service to see if they can help us. Um, if they get a grant, then they can help us form that plan um for us. Uh, we had a council member mention that the airport could use water and sewer for sa- fire safety and uh airport boardwalk project. That would make a boardwalk that would go like from the city property that is I don't know, partway down Kachemec and crossover onto state lands and go through those wetlands and to the airport. So people could walk from the airport along the boardwalk instead of having to walk the streets and the bridge into town and provide an extra bridge and and another bridge. Which is something that's in our comprehensive plan is to have a secondary path in case that bridge goes. So interesting proposal, um, very new and we'll see what comes of that one. Uh, the Saldovia Volunteer Fire Department, EMES, and have been discussing an ALMR radio bridge project, um, which is expensive. Not, I mean, not like building Jack Loaf expensive, but you know, expensive for a radio. Uh, we had several people mention that it would be nice to have an outdoor event venue during the comprehensive plan. Also, um, during the plan, comprehensive plan, we had discussion about the what desire for an outside beach RV park bike path. Uh, we included in the community change grant application, uh, which didn't come back that wetlands boardwalk from Spillum to Jack Loaf Bay Road across those wetlands that's behind the city property. And that would have joined a bike path. So I don't know if that's something that we want to consider moving forward on. And we also had in that community change grant an emergency food security cache, which I think was a fantastic idea that we purchase or let people purchase barrels or buckets, you know, fifty-five gallon, thirty-five gallon, five gallon buckets. And then have a place to store them. Obviously, we don't at this point, so that's the part of it. You need a place to store them that are outside of the tsunami inundation zone so that people that are inside the tsunami inundation zone would have a place that they could store food items like dried food items, you know, other comfort items. And then change out every six months or six months to a year, we'd give an opportunity for people to come in and change out their buckets. Um, and they would have a a a security cache. Uh, Cannon Beach does this. It seems like that's a successful program down there in Oregon. Uh, so that's where that came from and it's it's an innovative innovative idea because, you know, ninety percent of our population, not sure what the exact figure is, but it's a lot, um, are in the inundation zone. And then an ice that's supposed to stay plant. That keeps coming up over and over again. Came up as input from the comprehensive plan meeting and it's uh was part of the community change grant as well. But I gave a list of progress. It's main, I don't have to read that all out, um, unless you guys want me to. And the next steps are that we have asked for those project callouts from organizations and the public. And we're hoping to get those back from August twentieth. The Saldovia City Council hosts a work session on August twenty-fifth uh to discuss project inclusion in the plan. Uh, in September third, potentially that Saldovia Planning Commission can provide input on how projects support are supported by the comprehensive plan. And September following that, the Saldovia City Council can review the final draft plan and adopt. So, um, I can leave it at that. I'm sorry that that table of contents page at least didn't make it in here for projects, but if you guys want to have further discussion on that on. table of contents page at least may get it in here for projects, but if you guys want to have further discussion on that on September thirty ten. I think it's in the late.
Yeah, it is in the laydown.
Well, thank you, Clerk Diamond. Yeah, so those are the existing projects if you guys have input.
Um, this is Randy. Is it possible that the that AML could in incorporate the project list with the comprehensive plan update so that they could be tied to the goals? Um, so that when we're discussing it, we could just discuss it kind of holistically?
I can ask.
And that that way you'll get maybe feedback timely and and then work and then looking at priority or we we would have, especially if we're discussing kind of the results and what what the comprehensive plan is. Then that should maybe surface, give give like a way to look at those, how they integrate together.
An excellent suggestion. We will look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that takes us um to the staff reports.
Yeah, so we have our upcoming and open commission business. And the first item on there is the Cedar Street Extension. So that has come up again as a possibility that the landowners are now working on and hopefully going and getting some letters of intent. Uh, Mr. Sandland has been taking a building permit application and is going to bring back his proposal. And then with that, he has indicated that he would support a public easement as long as he can still do what he's trying to do. So after he does submit that permanent application, we'll look through and see if all the requirements can be met. And that public easement can still be put in. And um, I think the, you know, hopefully have the landowners work on letters of intent to go to that and go back to a survey company and find out the cost for just doing a very simple public use easement across the the cost increases because there's so many properties that it crosses. Um, and that's kind of each one of those has a thing that's attached to it. So we're going to go back and confirm what that, a good estimate for the cost of that survey.
Just on one piece of information, Clerk Diamond, um. Uh, when this issue first came up before the city council, the city council approved um, paying for half of the cost of of the um effort. So it's, I was wondering if you could check on your resolutions um work because um, that would be helpful to the property owners to uh, to be able to tap into that as well. That at at the city council, I don't, I'm, I don't recall the date, but at the city council, they initially talked about paying for all of it. And then one of the council members uh made an amendment to that. Resolution, I'm not sure if it was how how it was, uh, I believe it was a resolution. And then um, another council member asked that it be half and half. And so that that was done at a point in time. So if that could be followed up on so that we have that piece of information.
Yep, I can, I can look into that.
Thank you. And and also I just want to um um, just uh, it, this is not an item that I I will be excusing myself from the item itself. Uh, any voting on it because I am a property owner in that. So just again, just making sure that you all are aware of that.
Hmm, does anybody have any questions about the Cedar Street Extension thus far?
So so the cost of this survey and these stuff going on?
So the simplest cost would be to for the surveys to plot out the easement on all, I think it's nine properties. And then to s- submit and record those documents on each of those properties. And I think, yeah. Was it eight? It's either eight or nine. My apologies. I don't remember offhand. There are.
There's like three, but no.
There are, yeah, there are less property owners because there are owners of multiple properties on that. So, yeah. So we do have a quote for doing this from last year, but we'd have to see if it's still still current. So the next upcoming open business is the planning website updates. And I'm working on um kind of modeling it off the the City of Homer planning website, which has a very basic homepage and then in it has different um boxes that you can click on for the different zones and different permit type. And then there'll be a top portion that has um a place you can go to for just a very quick summary of current building permits that are in view for the last year. Um, and maybe just a minimal amount and then people can come in for more information as to not put out too much of people's personal informations, but at least the the permits that have been issued for that year and the lock and parcels that they apply to. If anybody has any questions or feedbacks on that at the moment. Our our current website is hard to, is hard to get to cooperate in a lot of these things, so. In doing this process, I now want to switch to a new website provider. And then um, item one, one C is the abatement, public nuisance ordinance, which we had just worked on in the previous city council work session. And although there were a couple of questions, it is going to be introduced, I believe, on Monday. Um, and I don't know if any manager giggle wants to make any more comments on that. And the central business slash commercial business district draft ordinance was also in the previous work session. And that is going to be introduced at the August eleventh, next Monday's meeting as well. And item one E, the administrative public hearing draft ordinance, that's something we're kind of working on. But in going through right now, it's um transitioning from having a board of appeals that fits in here to having appeals go before a outside hearing officer. Um, it is a code change that Homer had made several years ago and a lot of other smaller municipalities just because of the the limits to the people involved, to the conflicts of interest. Um, and then F on here, we have communication tower draft ordinance, which is also on the list as well for to come back. I think that came out of the prior discussion. Um, building permits to date, we had thirteen total from fiscal year twenty twenty five, one withdrawn. And um, as of for FY twenty six, we have one that came in in FY twenty five and was issued in FY twenty six. And that these for the crabbot grocery building. Um, but as of yet, we haven't received any more for FY twenty six yet. I'll turn it over to Heidi. You want to do the city manager's update, which?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is in the packet towards the end of the packet. And this is just the city manager report that uh was provided to SLD City Council at their July twenty eighth meeting. Um, I do believe we've discussed some of this at the last planning commission meeting. Uh, city council had a month break from meetings, so they were catching up. Um, you know, but just real quickly going through that we did have that Jacklof Bay Uplands preliminary decision issued for the fifty five year lease. Um, for the uplands out of Jacklof, that public comment varied ends August seventh. And um, then the final decision can be issued. And if approved, an entry authorization issued in a where we will um proceed with appraisal and lease. Uh, we're proceeding with the Jacklof Bay Dock Project that EA should be done any day, which is the environmental assessment. Um, and we have signed the grant paperwork for the Denali Commission um application. So or Denali Commission, that should say grant. We did receive a Denali Commission matching uh grant for the the project uh in the amount of four hundred eighty two thousand, uh, which is now um official. And you'll see below that that we also are included because we we a- also requested that match um through Senator Murkowski's office for congressional direct spending appropriation. And that did move through committee and is in the FY twenty six appropriation bill. So if that appropriation bill gets approved on the federal level and lots of additional four hundred eighty two thousand that could be coming our way. Um, I had mentioned that Senator Murkowski staffers will be here tomorrow in front of the post office. So if anybody has any interest in connecting with their senator, um, they'll be coming on the fast ferry and they'll be here. Uh, set up shop in front of the post office all day. Uh, we also have twenty two thousand dollars uh that's been hanging for like two years now. Uh, because it was FY twenty three congressional direct spending again um through Senator Murkowski that was appropriated in the FY twenty three appropriations bill. It's just been, it's such a little amount of money that it's been kind of a pain for everybody and it's been hanging out there. Um, but the lot, so the you uh, the US Department of Transportation transferred it to the Alaska Department of Transportation. Who have now transferred it to the Denali Commission. And the Denali Commission says they are going to tack it on to the Jacklof project and we're going to get our money. Um, so that's great because we can use more material. We've already used a lot of the material that we've um already purchased uh through a a an appropriation made by the state. Uh, they gave us, was it eighty eight thousand for material and we've um used all but eleven for that. So uh, getting material, fixing roads, moving forward, it's a good thing. The multi-purpose building generation improvement project. Uh, we've issued a request for quotes to install the new generator, which is here and automatic transfer switch. And so hoping that that has um comes to fruition. And then we get some people, it's a pretty short timeline because it needs to be obligated um by September. So trying to get that done uh with the remaining funds. We have about twelve thousand in remaining funds from a grant uh to get that done. Um, and we're not sure if that's enough, but we'll we'll see what we can do. We have a raw water transmission line replacement update. Um, the RFP is issued. So uh, that is has been updated even since um this July twenty eighth meeting.
Waterline coming out of the reservoir.
The lower thousand fifty feet is leaking. It's been welded steel from the nineteen sixties. It's got leaks in it. It's got clamps on it. It's needs to be replaced. Um, and we not only have the funding, but now we have RFP is out. Um, in the. Not yet. The closing date's September fourth, so it's very new. It just went out what last Friday. Clerk Diamond put that out. It'll circulate in the newspaper. Um, you had to give people at least thirty days. But hopefully, fingers crossed, we get somebody to bid on it and uh we can start that project and replace that. That'll be significant from the community for the community. Uh, da 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 da, we're still working through the pre-award environmental review process. I completed all those and submitted them. But they're in review by the agency for the roof repair on the SLD fuel and lube um building. We did receive a pedestrian counter to count pedestrians. And if you see DOT has gone through, um. I've had people say, I'm going to drive over as much as possible. Has gone through and put counters on our roads for vehicles. So if we can get the pedestrian counter up and then we have the vehicle counter up, it should be a really good indicator of um what kind of traffic we have going on. Unfortunately, it's like, you know, mid-August and not July. But maybe that's more of an accurate picture year round, averaging out here. Um, so hopefully we get some really great data. That way we can move forward with applying for grants for pedestrian safety and multimodal transportation projects. Um, so duh 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 KB Nur, and this was just one that was of interest uh that they thought that there uh was some toxins, HAB toxins in the Kachemec Bay that was causing the animal die-off, marine animal die-off. Uh, turns out that was not the case. And then initial blue muscle test that they did, they did, eh, they were not able to detect any of those toxins. So still trying to figure out what that determination is. They gave a great presentation last night and part of it wasn't uh, included. Um, included that they were working on that at the KBB assembly meeting, which I did attend last night till eleven PM, which is why I'm tired. So that was at the request of the city council because there was a sales tax proposition that would have negatively impacted the city of Sodovia. Increasing the summer sales tax one percent and decreasing the winter sales tax one percent. Um, and that has, they've removed it, so that's no longer in the equation this year. I did speak with the borough mayor. And we're going to talk about uh ways to offset that if it comes up again next year. Um, because that's like a fifty thousand dollar loss to the city if that uh ends up happening. So working on that. Um, I am really, oh, I'm excited that we applied for a national coastal resilience fund for a hydrology and wetland study in the city of Sodovia with the KB Nur. I'm really sad to report that the land acquisition project, the the funding, the BIL funding for land acquisition and restoration projects um that included the property around the water treatment plant and the Trina Lake properties um has been pulled. So there's no longer funding for that, but we are working with the Kachemec Land Heritage Trust. They did, they reached out and said there might be some other opportunities if we still wanted to pursue um, purchasing and and conserving the properties around Trina Lake. So still working on that. Exem Murkowski's office is here. We are working with AML for grant writing. Uh, they are able to write up to three grants for us a year. Uh, right now they are looking at two grants through the Rural Tribal Assistance Program. Uh, I guess when that comes out, it's really, really fast um paced and it's first come, first served. So they're just trying to be prepared for it and it is a transportation specific grant. So they're looking at improvements to the historic boardwalk, which is looking like it really needs some improvement as well as a planning grant for the harbor waterfront boardwalk. Um, again, talking about pedestrian safety and um alternative transportation pathways, trying to get people off the main road. Uh, so the VPSO and in conjunction with the city of Sodovia uh are in support of the VPSO program and just uh safety all around. Um, we have issued a couple of public notices about road safety and animal safety. Uh, and then you'll see in here, we talk about, you know, the copper heads of plan, which we already talked about. Planning Commission, the pool um update, which is also um, also took place at the meeting last night at the assembly meeting. And I did speak to that personally. But there was an inter- an ordinance introduced from assembly members uh Dunn and Johnson that would deobligate two hundred thousand in maintenance funds and transfer them to school operations in an effort to support the reopening of these assets. The public hearing for that is on August nineteenth. If you're interested in providing public comment or hearing, how that discussion goes. Um, and we had a successful cemetery work party. It looks amazing up there. And Lake Susan work party earlier declared some alders. So hopefully that gives some a little more visibility for people to see the lake. And public works keeps chugging along. So that's kind of the basics of it. Uh, unless, oh, the generator project is happening right now. Um, and that's going to go through mid-September. And there's more here if you guys want me to go over it, but um, we're, we're just chugging along here. Oh, KB Nur is going to do their beach sailing, the last one on August eleventh. People are interested in going out and looking at the baby fishes. They invite people to come. And I'm going to put out uh a notice about that tomorrow, so people are aware that that's happening. If they want to go check out our near fisher, nearshore fisheries, fishes. Um, that's a great, sounds like great fun opportunity. I'm sad I'm going to miss it because that's the last thing. I will be gone next week. I am traveling to Utagavik for an Alaska Municipal League Summer Conference. Uh, so I'll be gone from the eleventh to the fifteenth and then I come back and I turn right around and I'm taking personal leave starting the sixteenth to the twenty fourth. Um, for a family trip and I will not be in um. I will not be in a place where I have reception for the majority of that, so. I will not be in a place where I have reception for the majority of that. So during that time, next week, Jan is Acting City Manager. And then the following week, Leila's the Harbor Masters, the Acting City Manager. And I'm sure everybody will be in good hands. You can reach me by phone or text next week or email if you need me because I will be working, but not the following. Thanks, guys. That's what I've got.
Thank you. And thank you for all the amazing work for you and the city clerk and everybody else in the, in the city. Very much appreciated. That's a lot of, that's a lot of work. So thank you.
It is. And I would be remiss, I should have included that the crane is getting painted, the second crane, the first crane is done. It looks beautiful. And we're looking for quotes to fix the safety ladders on the dock. So another improvement. And we are doing an insulation project in the maintenance shop. So our Public Works crew is pretty busy for the next week and a half because they are ripping out the current insulation. And then we have a crew coming in on the 26th to spray foam. So another improvement there. Erin McKittrick is heading that up. I think Clerk Diamond has more information about that.
Yeah, it's on August 31st. It's going to start from the pavilion and go through the streets and go up Graduation Peak. She has a group of people who do these races regularly. And I think it's supposed to ideally raise the money for funds to improve the trail.
Thank you. The next item is informational items not requiring action. So I don't see anything there. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the commissioners?
Just, just, anything else?
Did you have any comments?
Like in general?
Yeah. Any, any comments on the meeting or anything else that's on your mind?
Sure. What do we need to do to get us a paycheck? Or at least one for Randy Sweet, who's doing all the work. Reiterating all of the bullet points for us.
Any other comments from the commission?
Good meeting. This was a lot of information sharing and it's kind of overwhelming to see what you all are juggling basically. A lot of balls in here. Good work.
Time to go on vacation.
Well, I'm tired. Life is a vacation.
Thank you. So our next meeting will be on September 3rd, 2025. And, and that, and so then that is the meeting where AML will be, will be coming to talk to us. And then motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. It is 7:50.